This is the, uh, this is the agenda of the board meeting. Senator and Board of Trustees, Senator Burnham, Cook County, Illinois, today is June 13, 2023. Trustee Pat?
Here.
Trustee Hodges?
Here.
Trustee Garcia?
Here.
Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Claybrook?
Here. Public comment, can we sign the pledge of allegiance? Can you read it, Trustee Greer?
I believe in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So, are there any corrections to be made in the 20 minutes of May 9th and May 23rd? I will ask for motion to approve the minutes from May 9th, uh, 2023, as well as May 23rd, 2023.
I make a motion to, uh, approve the minutes from the last board meeting.
The last meeting.
Of the last two.
Yes, there's a motion on the floor by Trustee Rixler to approve the minutes for May 9th and May 23rd. Can we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Trustee Hodges.
Trustee Pat?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed. Um, well, before we open the meeting to the public, if you have anything to say to the board, if people just stand up and give us your name, and you'll read the progress of the board, and we'll be glad you're with us. Uh, please let us know comments in three minutes, please. I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
A motion to open the meeting to the public.
Can we have a second?
Second.
A second. The motion was made by Trustee Hodges, or second by Trustee Richardson, will take your role.
Trustee Pat?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. Motion passed, meeting is now open to the public for public comment.
Okay, my name is, uh, Sharon, and, um, I'd like to thank, uh, uh, Trustee, uh, Greer. I had told her when I came up there to get my shot that there was some stuff out right behind me, back in the back of the garage, and she had called me, and she asked me, was it taken care of, and I told her, yeah, because whoever owned the house, they came and moved the stuff, and I'd just like to thank you very much for looking into it and taking care of it, okay?
You're quite welcome, and I would like to thank, um, Duane for, when I called him immediately over to take care of the situation, so thank you for being very busy.
Thank you, thank you very much, I'll thank you.
Are there any other public comment?
Uh, yes, Josephine Ross, uh, I had two situations going in my office at one time, and, uh, to continue, uh, Duane took care of the first problem, and, uh, Christine in office took care of the second problem, I just told them and it was taken care of right away, and people complained, but they never said thanks for what people do, and I'd like to thank them.
Are there any other public comments? Are there any other public comments? I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting for the public. Make a motion to close the meeting for the public. A motion on the floor by Trustee Claybrook to close the meeting for the public, can we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Trustee Cap, will take your role.
Trustee Pat?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes, motion passed, meeting is now closed for the public, um, I'd like to say that, um, I think our community is looking nice, and, uh, we appreciate people keeping the property up, um, there's some residents we still talk about cleaning out the alleyways and, and, um, some trees, some other item that we're taking care of, uh, put in soil, and, um, um, I'd like to say that the South suburban mayor of Black Hawk is, uh, granting scholarships to, uh, students, college students, and I have a flyer here, and, uh, I give to Trustee Greer, she can put it under her report, she can read it more in particular, and give you the particular details of it, but, but the requirement has to be in, uh, before July for a college student that's in college, and they get $500 if they get in, you know. Um, some people have reported, uh, skunks and raccoons and coyote sightings in the village, but we asked again if people would keep the, uh, garbage lid closed, and, um, I know a couple of people that seem to, they didn't leave them open all the time, uh, it's almost like they don't even need it, lay it on it, but, uh, to keep the lid closed, I think it's gonna help with that situation. And the last thing, um, if you watch Channel 2 News tonight at 10 o'clock, you might see some, uh, familiar faces on the Channel 2 tonight at 10 o'clock, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Secretary of State Mobile Unit will be here on Thursday, June 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. here at the Villa House, you can do your renewal on your driver's license, state ID, or your, um, plate, we know also.
Can you repeat the date?
June 29th, Thursday, here at the Villa House, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Uh, I, someone asked me a question, do they need to make an appointment or can they just come in?
No, they can just come in.
And second.
Yeah, someone asked why.
And, second, um, the points office will be closed, um, this coming Monday, June 29th, in Observatory, Valley, Cleveland.
Thank you, Joyce, for your report and that information, uh, public education is how safe and where are the Trustee Greer?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And thank you so much for coming out this evening. Fire and ambulance report, there were nine calls, this is for the month of May, 2023, there were nine fire calls, and there were, uh, there were five during the daytime and there were four at night, and some of the calls were cooking, fire, fire alarm activation, malfunction, four miscellaneous calls and two automobile accidents, and for ambulance calls, there were 43, and this is for the month of May, there were 24 during the daytime and there were 19 during the, uh, nighttime, that was for the month of May, 2023, so ambulance was really busy for the month of May. There is a reason why, uh, we, why we stop at stop signs. They're placed in our jurisdiction for, uh, and in our neighborhoods, our subdivision. Some people ignore the stop signs. They're distracted by their cell phone, by playing their radios up loud, they may be in a hurry, or they may think it's safe. About 25 to 30%, and that may be said lightly, do not stop at the stop signs. Driving is not a constitutional right, it's a privilege that can be revoked for many, many reasons. Drivers need to understand that stopping at a stop sign is not optional. Stop signs are used to alert people that need to slow down and prepare themselves for what's coming next, uh, like a crosswalk, a driveway, uh, children is playing, uh, with balls, and then they're, balls go on the street and then they go running out in the street, so there's a reason for those stop signs. And we're asking to stop at the stop sign. Now, if you get a ticket for running a stop sign, then they're gonna angry at us because you received a ticket, but, uh, and you're gonna tell that we're wrong, but again, stop signs, driving is a, uh, a privilege, it's not a constitutional right, so we're asking everyone to please, please, please stop at these stop signs, because the life that you save may be one of our children, you may be a relative, but we need everyone to obey those stop signs. When we start giving out tickets, then again, you're gonna be angry with us.
And we'll have to install all traffic cameras on the street, and we will do that.
Yes, okay. Our CPR class is filled, that's our CPR training class, everyone on that list will be notified as to the date, we thought we were able to do, uh, to do July the 8th, but, uh, we going through our dates, we see that that is taking up with another, um, event that we have, so everyone on that list will be notified as to what day we will be doing the CPR class, and it will be soon, the classes will be held at the fire department. COVID-19 will be at the Villa House, June the 24th, from 10 to 4, and if you know, we've been doing this every month for the past two years. People over 65, according to the CDC, the Center for Disease Control, may receive an extra booster vaccine. Now, uh, with these vaccines, we were able to give out gift cards of $100, but we never know how many cards that, uh, will be sent to us to give out, so we always say, as supplies left. We had one person who came, um, at our last month to receive a shot, and he came just before we closed, and of course, all of the gift cards were given out, so if you, if we have the gift cards this month, if you would like a gift card for receiving a vaccine, make sure you come early as possible. Our garage sale will be June, July the 15th, with a rain date of July the 22nd, so we hope that everyone participates, it's a lot of fun, it's a day of meeting your neighbors, meeting new people, it's just a, really a fun day, so July the 15th, um, is our, is our garage sale, and flyers will be out tomorrow, I will make sure that they're out tomorrow, uh, if you'd like to receive or want to get more information. We're also, uh, we're accepting school donations now. Okay, uh, let's see, I have two flyers, if you would like to receive a flyer, I do have some extras at the meeting. Are you a military, uh, person connected, in need of a roof repair or replacement? Habitat for Humanity, they're partnering with Oins Corning Roof Deployment Program. To be eligible, you must be a homeowner in the South suburban area, you must have a DD 214 showing an honorable discharge, you must provide documentation, documentation that the household income falls below 80%, must provide documentation that, uh, of a current mortgage and homeowner insurance, uh, payments, and you must be willing to partner with Habitat for Humanity and Oins Corning throughout the application process, so all the information is here for you, and again, if you would like to receive this card, please feel free, or if you would like to take a copy and share with someone else, please feel free.
I'm gonna help.
Okay, yeah, and the next one is Habitat for Humanity Home Ownership Program. Everyone deserves a decent place to call home. To start the application process, you must attend a virtual information session, where we will review the selection criteria and the application steps for being a part of this, uh, Habitat for Humanity, and this is for the South suburban area, and they have the dates of the meeting that they would like for you to choose to pick one, to, uh, start the process, and it's also in the back, it's also in Spanish, so please feel free to take a copy, if you don't need it for yourself, take it for someone else, um, to, to get the information, and I, the last thing I would like to say, let us all work together to keep our village safe, if you see something, say something, it is a crime, if a crime is in progress, if someone else, our safety, our property is in immediate danger, dial 911, otherwise, for any immediate concern, dial the non-emergency number, 708-891-2122. Remember to lock your vehicle doors and never leave your vehicles running unattended, I just know someone who did that, and he, uh, he, his car was taken away, and when you're going to the bank, uh, to any of these stores, please make sure that you check your surroundings, because I was just listening on the news, how, uh, people are following you, when you come out to the bank, they're following you home, so please, please be careful out there, and again, I thank everyone for coming.
Trustee, uh, Greer, thank you for your report and that information, Public Works and Building, Trustee Claybrook?
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
On, uh, May 26th, we celebrate National Public Works Week with, uh, lunch for the Public Works employees, Superintendent Duane, Mayor Pope, and, uh, I hope they enjoy it to show their appreciation. Also, uh, Public Works has been out cutting the grass and opening lots and, uh, trimming trees also, keeping the village clean. And we also, uh, filled some of the low spots on the parkway, they, you know, certain people got low spots, and we try to cover those, so, and someone is more in grad, they don't step down in the hole and toss the clips, so we can eliminate any safety hazard for that person.
That's all right. Thank you, Trustee Claybrook. In order of revolution and planet, Trustee Garcia, do you have?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The only thing I have is, we're having a job fair next week, Wednesday, June 21st, and it'll be from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and it'll be at the community center, so if you know anyone that's interested, please send them there with a resume.
I'm sharing after you and me, it's too bad.
What was the time? 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Okay.
What's your name, what company? Uh, Flexing Gate. Oh, okay. You can have any more copies, we can make copies. My email.
Women, women.
And many people have been from that, from that company. Yes.
And that's all you have?
Yes.
Well, thank you, Trustee Garcia, uh, finally, Trustee Cap.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have a couple of things today, first off, it's discussion of consideration of and taking action on authorizing the payment of last month's bills and this month's bills, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the payment of this month's and last month's bills.
A motion on the floor by Trustee Cap to pay the bill for this, for this money last month, so can we have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Trustee, please.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you.
Second item is, we've been spending a lot of time working with, uh, heating and ventilation contractors to get quotes to replace the furnaces at the community center, so I have a few, and I need to contact a few of them to see about the availability, because we heard there's a shortage of equipment, so we need to find a company that'll provide the equipment as well, so we'll have something by the next meeting to approve. The next item is appropriation dates, we need to set up the dates for the appropriation hearings, so what's your schedules like? Everybody, look at their calendar, we need at least two dates.
At least.
Or start with two dates.
And you guys do that at the end of June, like, June 26th, that week?
Monday, the 26th is good for me, then, is that what you're thinking?
Sure.
Is that?
Do you want in the daytime, like, the last?
You. Uh, I can, but.
Yeah, I'm working out daytime, I think daytime works best, I mean, because I got meetings at night, yeah, daytime.
What do you think, uh, what time?
I'm good anytime.
What about those two? Yeah, I'm okay.
Grace, how about you? You probably work it.
Yeah, if it's in the daytime, yeah. What time should I put in?
Oh, so Monday's a good day.
Yeah.
I don't care, like, 10 o'clock on Monday?
Yeah.
So that'll be one?
Yeah.
And then, what's your, uh, your second choice?
Is that same week?
I, uh, I could do Wednesday morning, we have a meeting on Tuesday, I could do, I could do Thursday in the day, and I could do Friday in the day.
Okay. Friday.
I can, Friday.
I have a work day.
That week. Friday will do.
You're not available once in a while?
I'm not available.
I'm available in the morning, but not the afternoon, not at 2:30, I have something at 2:30, but I could do Wednesday morning as well, Wednesday at 10?
Okay.
Want to do that? We'll shoot for Monday and Wednesday, 26 and 28.
That's June 28th.
26 and 28 to 10?
So I'm gonna get a deal Wednesday, love you Monday.
Okay, we'll, we'll fill you in, we'll give you copies. All right, thank you, and then if we need another date, we could either do, I mean, if we don't get it done in two, we need, we could always finish on Friday or Saturday?
Well, we have to stay an hour, and if we just stay an hour, it'll be done.
Okay.
Thank you, Trustee Cap, thank you for your report and your information.
All right, um, I'll wait, I'll save the other thing for last, I'll mention Leo at the end.
Okay, uh, Public Utilities, uh, Trustee Richardson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve. Proposal for professional engineering services for the risk and resiliency assessments water system for the US EPA mandate. The village of Burnham intends to comply with section 2013 of America's Water Infrastructure Act and has requested professional services related to updating their existing vulnerability assessment and general compliances with the AWI-A. For the above scope of services, Robinson Engineering, LTV, proposes a lump sum fee of $22,500. This fee is based on our understanding of the project and experience with similar projects, so I'm making a motion to approve the proposal for the professional engineering services for the risk and resiliency assessment.
Okay, so the motion on the floor by Trustee Richardson to, uh, to approve this proposal for $22,500, okay, we have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Second by Trustee Cap, will take your role.
Trustee Pat?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, see, Trustee Richardson?
Proposal for professional engineering services for emergency response plan, water system per the US EPA mandate, the village of Burnham intends to comply with section 2013 of America's Water Infrastructure Act and has requested professional services related to the preparation of an emergency response plan and general compliance with the AWI-A. For the above scope of services, Robinson Engineering, LTV, proposes the ERP to be completed on an hourly basis and with a not-to-exceed fee of $3,500. This fee is based on our understanding of the project and our experience with similar projects.
You have any questions?
Right, I didn't see, I, I'm making a motion to approve the, the $3,500 from Robinson Engineering Services.
Okay, so now the motion on the floor by Trustee Richardson to approve this for $3,500 for the emergency response plan, can we have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Hodges, will take your role.
Trustee Pat?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed?
One more thing, Lykor installed an underground gas line at the water pump station, this gas line is needed to power a generator to be installed at a later date, if all power is lost, this generator will keep the water flowing until normal operations resume, so that's just.
This is for the east side of Burnham exclusively, so, something from the water coming from Chicago, so, this information is more to.
Where would the generator be located?
It'll be located inside the gas pump. Any other questions? Um, Park and Recreation, thank you, Trustee Richardson, Park and Recreation, Trustee Hodges?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I met with the executive director with the mayor, me and the mayor went and over to, uh, came in Memorial Park District, uh, and we met with the executive director, and we're working hard to get some improvements done at the parks in Burnham, so you should be seeing some improvements at the parks coming up, definitely even more coming next year, but little by little, we're putting pressure on to make sure our parks are nice and taken care of, and we're working hard to advocate for Burnham, so we actually showing up in the office and knocking on doors, and I want to thank mayor for coming with me and backing me up on that, thank you so much, I appreciate that. Also, uh, Wednesday, June 21st, uh, the Thornton Township will be doing a day in the park here at Village Hall, right here, across the way, they're gonna have food, fun, entertainment, it's gonna be from 4 to 7 p.m. over there at the park on Wednesday, June 21st, it's gonna be a really fun day, music, fun, dancing, there's gonna be a lot of stuff going on over there, so come out and you're gonna have some fun, it's gonna be on June 21st. Also, Saturday, June 44th, I'm gonna do an open gym for Burnham, all people of Burnham, it's gonna be over at Sandwich Community Center, uh, right now, we got basketball, but I'm trying to work on maybe some other, other equipment, but right now, basketball, or they, definitely using the gym, you won't have to just do basketball, but we get to have free will to jump to the floor that day, I mean, uh, it's gonna be for actually going to floor on Saturday, June 24th, at Sandwich Community Center. Also, Saturday, July 8th, we'll be doing aerobic dancing with Mike D., um, he's a famous dance choreographer for, for some famous people, he's gonna be here in Burnham, at Community Center doing some dance aerobics, and we'll get that together, so you're gonna come by, learn some real choreography, some real dance at Community Center, we got him coming along, I think, uh, Trustee Claybrook, and some other trusty bring him in, and so I'm trying to make sure we got some things to do this summer, so that's gonna be on July 8th, and also, I want to keep everyone updated, there is a summer program for the kids, the Thornton Township has a summer region program which is free, um, it's gonna be, you go to thorntownship.com to register your kids, and all they gotta do is this, uh, if you wanna register as the parent, this guy, the person who registers has to have a Burnham ID, and they can be part of the summer program, okay?
Trustee Jeff?
What's up?
July 8th, what time?
July 8th will be at 12 o'clock.
At 12?
Yeah, 12.
Okay.
12, uh, and, oh, also, I'll be passing out, we, we should be getting books for Comment Memorial Park District, the stuff that's going on this summer, we should begin, the schedule should be coming out, I should be going door to door passing out the books to everyone, make sure they stay up to date with what's going on at the parks this summer, uh, not just our parks, but also the other parks in, in South Comment Memorial Park, there's been some really good stuff going on, so we should be able to have those coming out, and that's it. Got a question?
Just remind people about the books out there in the lobby there, the Southland Books, it's so interesting, it has a lot of, going on vacation, or various information, restaurants, if you need a hotel, it's very interesting, very informative, they're stacked out there in the lobby, please take one.
Yes, oh, the Southland Books, so, yeah, and they actually have a lot of great events going on all through the Southland, not just, because a lot of times, I talk about what's going on in the parks, but the Southland Books, like, like, coming up Wednesday, over there at Lansing, they're doing a big festival, and that's gonna start, like, I believe, like, at 1:00 all day long, to, like, 7:00, but that would be in the Southland Books, so we get those in the front, and they just got different schedules, well, I would keep you guys updated with that, usually I give you announcements on that at meetings too, but today, I wanted to keep it inside of Burnham, because we actually got stuff going on here for the summer, too, does that make sense? And also, we've been personally invited from trustee Johnson, um, over there at, uh, at Oak Forest Trustee to Field Day, which is Friday, June 30th, for the kids, it, um, it's basically, they can learn how to golf, um, it's called Field Day at the park, and it's gonna be at, uh, at George W. Dunn Golf Course, Route 63, 10 Central Avenue, Oak Forest, Illinois, and he actually personally invited the kids and the people of Burnham to that day, too, so, we've been connecting with people, trying to make sure we got stuff doing in Burnham, so, thank you, shma, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Trustee Hodges, for that information, we really appreciate it, and we're sure the public will as well. Um, are there any presentation or petitions? Did we have any communication, memoriam?
I think we should mention that, uh, one of our residents who helps us a lot in the village, Leo Yaribey, he was in a bad accident last Friday, he was helping somebody trim a tree or cut down a tree in a.